Good afternoon. I'm going to call the Lubbock City Council back to order. We are in, we returned from executive session. We're going to deal with, go through our ceremonial items tonight. We've got quite a, some real special presentations tonight. I know we're real excited about. However, before we get to that, we'd like to, as is our tradition, open with an invocation and the pledges. Our invocation tonight will be led by Pastor Larry Polk, who leads the good people at the New Home Missionary Baptist Church. In District Two. Sometimes they lead him, sometimes he leads them. But Larry, we're glad you're here tonight. I'm going to call the preacher up to the podium to offer the prayer. Following that, the mayor pro tem will lead us in the pledges. If everybody would rise, please.
Since we've known you in a special manner, our pardon, who are in heaven, how would be your holy and righteous name? Eternal God, we petition your throne to have mercy upon our city officials. Do in love a new thing. Let your will be done, through and in us, not our will but your will. Eternal God, help us to keep looking, relying, and depending on you. Because we acknowledge you, dear God, and it's in you we live, move, and have our people. God, oh eternal God, let the words of my mouth, the meditation of our hearts, be acceptable and pleasing in your sight. O Lord, our strength and our delight, in Jesus' name we pray.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor Texas flag. Our pledge allegiance to be in Texas, one state under God.
Preacher, thank you. Thank you for being here tonight. We appreciate you. Mayor pro tem, thank you for those pledges. Our first special presentation tonight is in honor of the 2021 Annual Ride of Silence and in memory of cyclists who have been killed due to bicycle or bicycle motorist collision. The mayor pro tem is going to do this presentation. Mr. Maschigal?
Thank you, mayor. Everybody here that's with the Ride of Silence, would y'all please come up here with me as I do this? We do lots of special recognitions, and they're all important, but this one is particularly important. This is my fifth time to do this since I've been on the council, and that's to recognize those that have lost their lives in traffic deaths related to cycling. those that have lost their lives in traffic deaths related to cycling. This room is a little different than the first ones I've done because it lacks, a friend of mine, Councilman David Nelson, who was killed on his bicycle on a road outside of Lubbock. And those types of deaths are unnecessary. If you've ever ridden a bike or even a motorcycle, you understand how dangerous it is because we live in a world where we get in our cars and we've got our phones and our cars are quieter than they've ever been, and we tend not to follow the rules. We tend to stick that phone in our ear, or we think it's necessary to text when it's not. What you don't understand is you're putting someone else at risk. And the public thoroughfare is there for us all to share, whether you're on a bike or a motorcycle or even a vehicle. So I think it's important to take time to recognize this today and to remind people to pay attention when they're driving. So if you'll please indulge me. Whereas the mission of the Ride of Silence is to honor cyclists injured or killed in collisions involving motorists and bicycles, is to promote and educate the public regarding bicycle safety and to reinforce the message of "Share the Road," from America's Bicycle Safety Awareness Campaign. And whereas cyclists have a legal right to share the road with automobiles, sadly, the motoring public is often not aware of these rights and is often not paying special attention to people on bicycles, which creates a dangerous and potentially fatal situation for the cyclists. And whereas, the West Texas Cycling Association annually organizes the Ride of Silence and invites all interested cyclists to participate. This free event will be held on May 19th and will meet at 6:30 on the Tech Campus at 19th and Indiana, and wheels will roll at 7:00 PM. Cyclists are asked to ride no faster than 12 miles per hour, wear your helmet, follow the rules of the road, and remain silent during the 11.3 mile ride. And whereas, it is fitting to recognize the West Texas Cycling Association for organizing this memorial event during the month of May, which is National Bike Month in the United States, and to join them in reminding the public to share the road and be mindful of cyclists on our streets and roadways. Now therefore, we, the mayor, and the city council of the great city of Lubbock, offer special recognition to the West Texas Cycling Association Ride of Silence and encourage all motorists to be always courteous when sharing the road with cyclists and encourage all cyclists to support the West Texas Cycling Association by participating in this annual memorial event. It's dated today, May 11th, 2021. It's signed by the mayor and all the members of the Lubbock City Council. Who's to contact you?
Good afternoon. On behalf of the Lubbock Cycling Community, I would like to thank Mayor Polk, the city council, for this recognition. As he said, on the 19th of this month at 6:00 PM, we will be leaving the Tech Campus in order to participate, not just us, but with thousands of cyclists across the country in the annual Ride of Silence. Every year, on average, over 750 people are killed in vehicular collisions. Thousands more on every year are injured, some permanent. Now, as we said, Lubbock is not immune from these incidents, as we all remember David Nelson, who sat on this very council. David's death sent ripples throughout not only the community, but our small group. It's been incredibly significant within our organization. However, we believe his legacy of kindness and outreach will live on and will be honored by events like this. Now unfortunately, I did not have the opportunity to meet this man, but I know his legacy will be in our hearts and our minds. What we would like is we ask that all people out there in Lubbock and across the country just to remember that there's a human being on top of that machine. That's somebody who wants to finish their ride, go home to their families, get up in the morning, excuse me, and to continue what they do loving every day. If you would like any more information, you can stop by our website at bikewtca.org or search for the Ride of Silence Lubbock on Facebook. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Let's get a picture over here. Does that bike have significance? Would you like to explain the significance of that bike?
Yes, our, every year we have one ghost bike to represent the person who did not come home. We, every memorial for the Ride of Silence and every ghost bike that's out there represents at least one person who didn't make it back and to ask that you remember them every time you pass.
Thank you, Mr. Massengill. Item 5.3.2 is our second special presentation. It's in recognition of the 100th anniversary of the Lubbock Police Department. Mr. Atkinson, would you set this up, please?
You bet. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Appreciate the opportunity to be here today. As noted, today is the celebration of the 100th anniversary of the Lubbock Police Department. I think you've had a chance, and if you haven't, would encourage everybody to please look around in the lobby, see a lot of the history, see a lot of the challenges, you see the successes of the Lubbock Police Department. And of course, just over the last year, in some very unusual and trying situations, you've seen that again. So with that, and no further ado, I'd ask Chief Floyd Mitchell to walk us through the event today.
Good afternoon, council. Good afternoon, public and everyone watching on TV. I'd first like to start off by offering our thoughts and prayers to the two constable sheriff's deputies that lost their lives this morning. They were brought to Lubbock to the ME's office. We met them and guided them into our city to pay them their due respects. So I'd first like to start off by offering our thoughts and prayers to their families. I'd also like to introduce the members of the Lubbock Police Department. We're not going to call them off name by name because one, I don't know all their names yet, but this is just a small representation of the men and women of the Lubbock Police Department, both sworn and non sworn. Appreciate you guys. I'd also like to have retired Chief Thomas Nichols and retired Chief Dale Holton of the Lubbock Police Department, please stand up to be recognized.
Council, according to the 1920 census, Lubbock had a population of 4,051 people. On May 6, 1921, the Lubbock City Commission met in a special meeting with the following people present. Then-Mayor C.E. Parks, Commissioners L.H. Simpson, Commissioners G.O.C. Woolfarth, Commissioner J.O. Jones, and Commissioner W.S. Posey. Also present was City Attorney R.A. Soudar and City Manager M.S. Ruby. The mayor stated that the object of the meeting was to appoint a chief of police for the city of Lubbock. Upon a motion made by Mr. Woolfarth, seconded by Mr. Simpson, and with a unanimous vote of the council, of the commission, C.S. Middleton was appointed as Lubbock's first police chief. Chief Middleton was to receive a salary of $150 per month and was to, and I quote, "own his own horse and take care of saying." During this same meeting, the chief was given the authority to recommend two policemen to the city commission to act as subordinate officers to the chief, and they were to receive a salary of $100. The very next day, given under hand and seal of the seventh, on this seventh day of May 1921, and I quote, "I.C.E. Parks, Mayor of the city of Lubbock, by authority vested in me, do hereby appoint C.S. Middleton, Chief of Police of the city of Lubbock, for a term of one year, unless otherwise terminated by and with the authority of the commission. I do hereby make this appointment." And the Lubbock Police Department was formed. I would submit to this council, 100 years later, things look a little different than they did back in 1921. With a city population of over 600, I'm sorry, of over 265,000, and a police department consisting of 500, of more than 550 law enforcement and non sworn staff members, the council members of 1921 would be astounded at how much Lubbock and this police department has grown. This month and throughout this year, the men and women of the Lubbock Police Department celebrate 100 years of service to our Lubbock community. And it is with great honor and pride that I get to represent the Lubbock Police Department as its 23rd appointed police chief. The men and women are some of the most highly trained, caring, and compassionate human beings on this earth. We are honored at the trust and authority that this council and the citizens of Lubbock have bestowed upon us to keep this city safe and call it our home. To our Lubbock community, know that each and every day, the members of this department continue to strive to earn your trust, respect, and exceed your expectations. As duly elected representatives of our community, please know, there is no way that our officers could accomplish its task without the support of this council, its appointed professional staff, and our other Lubbock city departments, fire, health, public works, HR, parks, facilities, sanitation, and so on. As a group, we all assist, support, and work together toward one common goal, to make Lubbock a better, safer place to call home. As a token of our appreciation from the law enforcement and civilian staff of the Lubbock Police Department, we would like to present 100-year ceremonial badges to the following individuals for their unwavering support of the Lubbock Police Department. Mayor Polk, would you join me at the podium? Thank you for your support. Mayor Pro Tem and Council District Four Representative Steve Massengill, would you join me, please? District One Council Member Juan Chaddis, would you join us, please? District Two Council Member Sheila Patterson-Harris, would you join us, please? No, it does not. District Three, if you break the glass, we will, alarm will sound. District Three Council Member Jeff Griffith, would you join us, please? District Five Council Member Randy Christian, would you join us, please? District Six Council Member Latrell Joy, would you join us, please?
I've always wanted to wear a badge.
I want to say thank you to our council members. Thank you so much. As I spoke to earlier, we cannot do this alone. There's other people that help us do our jobs, facilitate us doing our jobs. I would ask the City Manager Jared Atkinson, please join us. No. City Attorney Chad Weaver, would you join us, please? For those in our audience, these are our council appointees. City Secretary Becky Garza, would you join us, please? Ladies and gentlemen, our board appoint, our council appointees. I've got two more groups. I truly cannot do my job without the help and assistance of my fellow department heads. Our department calls upon them for many things, whether they, we need them to help us pull a limb out of the street, or we're having an issue in the parks, just you name it, we rely on each other. So I would like to recognize Deputy City Manager Bill Howerton.
I see him out there. All of them need to come in.
Assistant City Manager Jessica McEckern, she may be outside as well. Oh, there she is, right there. For all of you who don't know, when I interviewed for this position, Jessica is the one who took me out and had to finally say so. So me being here is her fault. Assistant City Manager Brooke Witcher, she's here? At the lake, okay. Chief Financial Officer Blue Costilich. This is the man with the money. There's one more Assistant City Manager or Department Head, but I know he's outside handling the situation now, and that is Fire Chief Sean Ferguson, and I will give him his badge. I would also like to call forward at this time Sergeant Brandon Price, call him up to assist me in presenting one final badge to Texas State Archivist and the Archivist for the Southwest Collection, Dr. Monte Monroe. Without the help and countless hours and assistance and dedication of both Sergeant Price and Dr. Monroe, we would have not been able to pull this off. Dr. Monroe was instrumental in helping us find a great deal of our department's history, and we will forever be grateful for his assistance. So a special thanks goes out to Texas State Archivist Dr. Monroe and the unofficial historian of the Lubbock Police Department, Sergeant Brandon Price. Hold on, Brandon. Yeah, once he starts, it's not going to stop. You've got two minutes, Brandon, you've got two minutes. I am going to give Brandon and Dr. Monroe a moment to talk about how important this is to the Lubbock Police Department. Brandon?
So it was actually a really awesome meeting. Dr. Monroe, when I was a rookie working in City Jail back in the day, his wife Laura was actually one of the city magistrates, so I actually got to work with her for many years. And so, anyway, he's done a ton of work. He has a ton of resources at Texas Tech. The Southwest Collection has tons and tons of resources, and luckily JT Alley, who was the chief, one of the longest chiefs in the state and the nation, both, his family provided a ton of information to the Southwest Collection that he provided us access to, which is a lot of stuff you see out there. And so without the Southwest Collection, we wouldn't have near what we do have. But we learned a lot, you know, doing the things that we did and ran across, and the document that he tracked down through city records to identify exactly where we came from, and it helps us find out where we're going. So with that, I'd like you to speak a little bit longer.
I think all the council and the chief all know that I've spoken enough today, if you attended the Tornado Memorial, but I will say this: I am proud to live in Lubbock, Texas, and I'm proud to have had the honor and the privilege to serve with Brandon and the various committee members, Chief, Assistant Chief Castle, I don't know if he's back, there you are, back there, John. We've had a wonderful time, and I hope that we have put together the history of this wonderful institution here, the Lubbock Police Department, who allow us every evening to sleep in peace, and they are out there putting their lives on the line every day. I've learned that. I used to hear the stories when my wife was a magistrate for 17 years. I cannot thank them enough. They have the toughest job in this city, and I'm honored to be here today. And my grandfather was sheriff of Orange County many years ago. He was one of the people that helped put away Bonnie and Clyde. And now, I always wondered about his badges. He said, "No, I don't have my badge anymore." Well, now I have one that's even better. Thank you. It's been a privilege.
Counsel, this ends our presentation, and we look forward to serving the next 100 years protecting the citizens of Lubbock with your support.
Okay, so we have a presentation to the chief, but I want to make a couple comments first. Chief, a number of members of Chief JT Alley's family are here. If you guys would raise your hands, we'd like to recognize you. Thank y'all for being here. That's a big deal. I've had a chance to look at some of the memorabilia. I hope all of you will. If you're watching us on TV or the World Wide Web, make sure you get down to Citizens Tower to check out the great memorabilia artifacts, information about the 100 years of the Lubbock Police Department. There's a lot about Chief Alley there. I had a chance this morning to look at some of that. Monty, thank you. Thanks for working with Brandon. Brandon, thanks for taking the lead. Monty, you're a jewel to our community. I don't know if Laura feels this way or not, but I do, and we're thankful for you. You did a wonderful job earlier today at the Tornado Memorial dedication, and they thank you for this. Chief, on behalf of the council, just thank you. Thank you for the men and women that wear a badge, and those that support, the ones of you who do wear a badge. Monty talked about us being able to sleep comfortably at night, and we do. And we were reminded this morning, as we learned of the shooting killings of two West Texas sheriff deputies, that it's not a given. And so the council has a special recognition for you guys, a special proclamation. I promised Casey that I would show this so she could look at it, and I'm going to have to pull it down and read it, Casey, because I don't have the script. But whereas the Lubbock Police Department, who has a mission of enhancing the quality of life in Lubbock by working cooperatively with the public to prevent crime, enforce the laws, preserve the peace, and provide a safe environment, was established on May 7, 1921. This year, the Lubbock Police Department proudly celebrates its 100th anniversary of protecting and serving the citizens of our great city. And whereas, throughout the 100-year history of the Lubbock Police Department, the citizens of the city of Lubbock have called on the officers of the department millions of times to assist in their greatest moments of need. Generations of men and women have taken an oath to protect, excuse me, to preserve, protect, defend, and become officers of the Lubbock Police Department to serve their fellow citizens. And whereas, the officers and civilians of the Lubbock Police Department dedicate themselves to the service of others through every facet of their jobs, and often outside of their roles as well. The commitment of Lubbock Police does not stop with those on patrol. The department's commitment continues through every employee, whether that person is the dispatcher who answers a 911 call, a member of the crisis intervention or negotiator teams who takes every step to help an individual in distress, the investigators who are working every lead to ensure justice is served, or the administrative team who ensures all aspects of the department serve the citizens to the very best of their ability. And whereas, it is appropriate to recognize the Lubbock Police Department as they celebrate 100 years with pride in the past and faith in the future. Now therefore, we, the mayor, and the members of the Lubbock City Council, of the great city of Lubbock, do hereby recognize the Lubbock Police Department and commend all who have contributed to the success of LPD over the past 100 years, and express our heartfelt thanks to the Lubbock Police Department's commitment to preventing crime, preserving the peace, and providing a safe environment for all citizens of Lubbock, Texas, dated this 11th day of May 2021, signed by the mayor and the members of the Lubbock City Council. Congratulations, Chief. I think it's also worth mentioning that we have representatives from Congressman Arrington's office, Representative Frulo's office, Senator Cruz's office, maybe among others, those are the ones I've seen, as well as a number of community partners who rely on people like the food bank, who rely and work closely with our police department. So thank you, guys, for being here tonight also. Finally, tonight, we'd like to recognize several community members who have accepted our offer to serve on our boards and commissions. We couldn't do our work without them, and so I'd like to have Grant Gurlik, Blake Seiler, and Lyle Williams come forward, please. I don't believe that Margaret Kelly or Krista Jones are here. If you're here, yeah, okay. So Mr. Gurlik is new, serving on the Animal Services Advisory Board. Mr. Seiler is serving on the Lake Allen Henry Board of Appeals in a citizen position, and Mr. Williams is serving on the Urban Design and Historic Preservation Commission. We have for each of them a recognition of their service, and it says, and this is for Mr. Gurlik, but it says, "Greetings, the member of the city council reposing special trust in the integrity of," in this case, Grant Gurlik, "hereby point to the Animal Services Advisory Board to act within the jurisdiction and authority prescribed by the city of Lubbock in such capacity, confirmed this 11th day of May 2021, signed by the mayor and the members of the Lubbock City Council." I've got one of these for each of you. Grant?
Thank you very much. Appreciate you very much.
Mayor, I think we've got one more recognition. We've got a special rec for the Northwest Water Reclamation Plant.
Oh, I skipped it.
If you wouldn't mind staying out there.
I'm going to let the city manager tee this up. I know Mr. Turpin's going to come up. We've got a bunch of our, we have a bunch of, we want to recognize one of our departments tonight.
Activate the. There we go. Thank you. Mayor, council, also another opportunity tonight to recognize a group of city employees as Mr. Turpin moves forward. You might recall, John is the somewhat recently appointed Assistant Director over Public Works. So John has gone through and nominated one of our groups for an award that no one at the city has received before. John's going to walk you through this recognition, and most specifically, this is for your Northwest Water Reclamation Plant. You may recall, that is the new one, obviously on the northwest side of town, but that is one of the single most technologically advanced, safest, most highly treated plants in the state of Texas right now. So John, if you would, take us through that and recognize your team over there.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor, council. Just truly happy here to be tonight, here to be here tonight and recognize Mary Gonzalez and her wastewater treatment plant group here on my left. Tonight, or tonight, I would like to say that we won the George W. Burke Junior Facility Safety Award. It's a national safety award in recognition of the excellence of its active and effective safety program and safety record. As our city manager just told you, our plant is basically, is able to be fully operated from our southeast water reclamation plant. We were able to get that recognition even with only having the plant go on since 2018. It made a huge difference during COVID, because our plant staff was able to operate even with minimal staff and fully operate our plant from our other water reclamation plant, and to date, we have had no safety incidents at our plant even since, all the way through construction. So this is an awesome award and truly a great award for our water plant people. So this is Mary Gonzalez.
It's so nice to receive this award. Thank you, Mayor and Council, and I'd like to introduce some of our staff that have worked out at that plant. I have, okay. 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 I have Craig Henderson, who's our wastewater system supervisor, Bill Boyd, who's our operations coordinator. I have some treatment plant operators. We have Berta Raina and Isaac Perez. So thank you so much.
Get up here if you guys around me, and we'll, it's a work to you, and get folks
Mr. Atkinson, would you like to add anything to that before we go to our meeting?
Thank you, Mayor. I really would. I think they're all running out the door, but Mary, to you and your team.
They're afraid they might get called on to speak.
They might get called back up here again, but Mary, to you and your team, thank you so much. And really, we talk about wastewater treatment plants, and that's not usually top of everybody's list to want to go and see, but the plant they have out there and what that does on behalf of Lubbock, and really what that plant will contribute to Lubbock's future is really hard to overstate. It's an impressive operation, extremely high-tech organization, and we just thank you very much for what all of you do. So thanks for coming out tonight. John, thank you for getting this started.
Okay, that concludes our ceremonial items. It is 5:20. I'll call the Lubbock City Council to order. We are, today is May 11, 2021. We are in our regularly scheduled council meeting. Meeting's been posted and called in the manner required by law. Our first item tonight is Item 6 on the agenda, citizen comments. We have no citizens that have signed up to speak tonight, so we will move directly to Item 7. Item 7 are the minutes. Included in our board packet, or agenda, are the minutes from the March 24, 2021 Special City Council Meeting that was at the Lubbock Economic Development Alliance Board Meeting, the March 30, 2021 Special City Council Meeting, that was the Electric Utility Board Meeting, the April 13, 2021 Regular City Council Meeting, and the April 14, 2021 Special City Council Meeting, Coffee with the Mayor. Counsel, is there a motion to begin consideration of these minutes?
Motion approved.
Thank you, Mr. Massengill, as our second. Thank you, Mr. Chatis. Counsel, are there additions or corrections to these minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion to approve these minutes as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that same side? The motion carries seven to zero. We'll move now to the consent agenda. It's number eight on our agenda tonight. It begins on page 43. I don't believe we've had any, we have any pulls tonight. Counsel, is that correct? Looking to my left and my right. Okay, no pulls. So the consent agenda, our items are considered to be routine and enacted by one motion without to be routine and enacted by one motion without separate discussion. If the council desires to discuss an item, that, that item is removed from the consent agenda, considered separately. We don't have any of those tonight. So, I'll open the floor for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Patterson-Harris.
There's some good stuff down in there, and I move for approval.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson-Harris. I agree with you. Is there seconds? Thank you. We have a number of seconds. I'll take Ms. Joyce's second. I, I think there's, you know, there's so many people wanted to, to, to second the consent agenda without any pulls. That's activity. All right, we have a motion, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that same side? All right, that motion carries seven to zero. We will move now to our regular agenda, Item 9. The regular agenda begins on page 301 with Item 9 dot 1. We have eight items from planning, excuse me, we have eight second reads from planning tonight. And I will ask the Director of Planning, Mr. Brian Isom, to come forward and quickly review those eight items. After such time, we'll decide how we would like to handle these. Mr. Isom?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Item 9.1 is Case 2538-S for Texas Green LLC, represented by Westark Commercial Realty. The request is to rezone to Light Manufacturing District M1 from Single Family District R1. This is a development for proposed GBOs, and the M1 is being requested for the ability to have outside storage. Here we show the subject site outlined in orange, generally located south of 19th Street, east of Gatlin Avenue. Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this request by unanimous vote, and City Council approved first reading also by unanimous vote.
Counsel, any questions on item 9.1?
Okay, let's move to Item 9.2, please, Mr. Isom, page 320.
Item 9.2 is Case 2921-C for UMC Health Systems, represented by Hugo Reed and Associates. The request is for a specific use for a hospital on property zone Commercial District C4 at 11,003, 11, 011, and 11, 109 Slide Road. Here we show the subject site outline in orange, generally located south of 110th Street and east of Slide Road. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this request by a vote of six to zero with one abstention, and City Council approved first reading by a vote of seven to zero.
Counsel, any questions on 9.2? Let's go to 9.3, please. It begins on page 337.
Item 9.3 is Case 3047-Z for TK and RB Investments, represented by Hugo Reed and Associates. This was a request to rezone to General Retail District C3 from Central Business District General CB3 Specific Use. Here we show the subject site outlined in orange, generally located south of 114th Street and west of Quaker Avenue. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this request by unanimous vote, and City Council approved first reading also by unanimous vote.
Thank you, Mr. Isom. Questions on 9.3, Counsel? Let's go to Item 9.4, page 354, Zone Case 3145-H.
Item 9.4 is Case 3145-H for Raymar Communications, represented by Cox Dirks Architect PC. The request is for a specific use for antennas, towers, and alternative tower structures on property zones Central Business District Civic Center CB5 at 612 Avenue O. And the request is specific for a 200-foot-tall monopole structure. Here we show the subject site outline in orange, generally located north of 8th Street and west of Avenue O. Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this request by unanimous vote. City Council approved first reading also by a unanimous vote.
Thank you, Mr. Isom. Counsel, any questions on 9.4? Let's go to 9.5, page 370, Case 3257-K.
Item 9.5 is Case 3257-K for 1585 Development LLC, represented by Hugo Reed and Associates. This is a request to change zoning to Local Retail District C2 from Garden Office District GO and Apartment Medical District AM at 13501 and 13701 Indiana Avenue. Here we show the subject site outline in orange, generally located south of 135th Street and east of Indiana Avenue. Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this request by unanimous vote. City Council also approved first reading by a unanimous vote.
Okay, Counsel, any questions on 9.5? Okay, we'll go to Item 9.6, page 384, Zone Case 3428.
Item 9.6 is Case 3428 for Gregory Dane Church. The request is to change zoning to Two Family District R2 with a specific use for a travel trailer park from Two Family District R2, Commercial District C4, and Interstate Highway Commercial District IHC. Here we show the subject site outline in orange, generally located north of 77th Street and east of Avenue P. Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this request by unanimous vote. City Council approved first reading also by unanimous vote.
Thank you, Mr. Isom. Any questions on 9.6? Let's go to 9.7, please, page 406, Case 3429.
Item 9.7 is Case 3429 for True North, represented by SK Architecture Group. The request is to zone, change zoning from Neighborhood Service District C1 to Family Apartment District A1 at 2124 15th Street. Here we show the subject site outline in orange, generally located on the north side of 15th Street and east of Avenue V. Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this request by unanimous vote. City Council also approved first reading by unanimous vote.
Counsel, any questions on 9.7? Okay, Mr. Isom, let's move to 9.8, page 423, Case 3430.
Item 9.8 is Case 3430 for Blackstone Development, represented by Centerline Engineering LLC. The request is to, for a zone change to Local Retail District C2 and Single Family District R1 with a specific use for garden homes from Transition District T. Here we show the subject site outline in orange, generally located north of 110th Street and west of Milwaukee Avenue. Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this request, and City Council also approved first reading both by unanimous votes.
Thank you, Brian. Okay, Counsel, any questions on, on 9.8? All right, Mr. Isom, don't go far. Counsel, are you okay with considering these collectively?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll open the floor for a motion to that effect, to, to consider Items 9.1 through 9.8.
Mayor, make a motion to approve Items 9.1.
Second. Got a motion from Mayor Pro Tim, a second from Mr. Griffith. Okay, is there discussion on this motion to approve Items 9.1 through 9.8? This will be second reading, all planning items. All right, seeing none. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that same side? Motion carries seven to zero. Okay, let's go to Item 9.9. This is a, this is a first reading from planning. It's Zone Case 2565-E. We've, we've had the public hearing on this, Counsel. Once this is called back up, you'll, you'll recall, you'll recall this case. Before we get Mr. Isom to brief us, let's get a, let's get a motion to begin consideration on this. Is there a motion? Thank you, Mr. Christians, our second. Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Mr. Isom, once again, this is a, this is on 441, it's Case 2565-E. Looks like you've got a bit of a briefing here for us. Is that correct?
I do.
Thanks.
Item 9.9 is Case 2565-E for Veepool and Indira Patel. The request is for a specific use for a travel trailer park on property zone Interstate Highway Commercial District IHC at 5930 Avenue Q South Drive. Staff sent out 33 notifications, and we received one in opposition and none in support. Here we show the location of the letter of opposition. And here we show the, the subject site outline in orange, located south of 58th Street and east of Avenue L. Current zoning on site, as I said, is Interstate Highway Commercial, with a mix of high-density apartments to the north, additional IHC to the east and to the south, and Single Family District R1 to the west. The Future Land Use Map does call for commercial development within this area. And here we show some subject site photos. To the bottom left, it says Hotels and Motels. I believe that's actually the existing VA center, but there are additional hotels and motels along the I-27 front right there. So, what does this request entail? It's a specific use for a travel trailer park. The applicant has indicated from our Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on that their intention is to only operate this as a travel trailer park. In addition, they're providing a detailed site plan that shows dimension of their parking areas, a six-foot-tall screening fence on the west side of the property, and to mitigate some of the neighboring concerns. And here is their site plan. While the Future Land Use Map does show this location is commercial, staff feels like the proposed project would serve businesses within the vicinity and would generate additional tax revenue. The proposed project is also in conformance with the zoning ordinance, as the IHC district should provide commercial land uses that provide on a regional scale, as this type of facility would. Proposed zoning is compatible with the surrounding areas. It will not change the character of the existing development. It's also unlikely to require any additional public improvements. So, at the previous meeting, City Council had requested to postpone for the applicant to reach out to Tech Dot. We have some of that correspondence within your packet, and some of their Tech Dots' response to their drive approach. And I believe Mr. Patel is here tonight. If you have questions for him. But the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this request by a vote of four to one, and staff is available for any questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Isom. Counsel, questions, questions for Mr. Isom? Mr. Isom, why don't you go, do you have the, do you have that communication from, from Tech Dot? And, do you have, do you have that with your files? Can you pull that up?
I don't have it there. I have a hard copy.
Okay, tell us, go, go through that if you would, please, what that, what that communication says.
I'll just go ahead and read it.
It'll be fine.
"I apologize for the delay in getting back to you. This preliminary site map looks good, and I don't see any issues with the driveway spacing. The right-in, right-out design is ideal as well. Just keep us posted if anything changes as you put the development together. As I mentioned on the phone, the larger concern we'll have is the runoff on the Tech Dot right away. I've copied Zach Zeller here as he reviews all of our site development. Once you get to that point with the engineering, please forward that information to him. Don't hesitate to contact me with any further questions. Signed, Ross McMillan."
Okay, so, pull the site plan back up if you would, please, and show, show the Council where the, as this, as, as per the site plan, where, where egress and ingress would be into, into this property.
Are you able to see my mouse?
We are.
There's one in here.
Okay, so that's, that would be, that's along Avenue Q, is that correct?
It is. Yes, I believe it's the small access road that comes off Avenue Q South. So, Avenue Q would be this larger piece up here.
Okay.
And there's a smaller access road. And based on the communication, it's a right-in right here and then a right-out.
Okay. So, that, and that would be the only way to enter or exit on Avenue Q, is that correct?
I believe so. That's correct.
Okay, where are the other, where's, where's the other ingress, egress spot?
I don't believe there's any other ingress or egress, just those, one ingress and one egress onto that street.
Okay. And it, as I recall from our conversation six weeks ago, if, if someone was traveling into the community from the southeast, so if they were going, let's just say generally north on Slaton Highway, Highway 84, Avenue Q, whichever it would be, how, how, how are they going to enter this property?
That is a very difficult question. I might have to get the applicant to respond to that one. That takes some maneuvering.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Isom? Okay, thank you, Mr. Isom. We may likely call you back. I'll open the floor right now for Counsel, Counsel, Counsel discussion on this. Ms. Patterson-Harris?
Mayor, how did you know?
Just had a feeling.
I am still in the position that I was whenever we met on this thing before. Even more so, I received some emails from citizens that live to the southwest, early, if I can say it like that, southwest from this proposed site. And they are very much opposed. They're concerned about the traffic. They're concerned about the type of vehicles that will be there. There's a lot of, lot of anticipated vehicles that would be moving in and out of this location, which is also a concern for me. I'm equally concerned as to how those folks coming from the southeast would enter this location. My guess is they would have to travel through this neighborhood or somewhere in the vicinity to make their way to this location. My concern is I do not believe that is a good fit. I believe that the location poses a huge concern. I am equally as concerned as to the spot that, I can't remember what it was called last time, but my concern is the runoff, I believe, is Tech Dot was talking about. But my concern is it running off to this pooling spot. So, it doesn't, still does not sit well with me. I still hear some concern, even in Tech Dot's voice, as to what's going on here. I still stand there, and I cannot support this project.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson-Harris. Further comments? The city manager and I were talking about this. Let's go ahead. Mr. Griffith?
Mayor, thank you. I'd, I'd like to hear from the proponent.
Okay, Mr. Patel? What questions do you have, Mr. Griffith?
Good evening. Thanks for coming up.
Good evening. Thank you.
You heard Ms. Patterson-Harris's concern about it, if you, if you have travelers that are coming in to your business, but they're traveling from the southeast to get back into the drive into your property. And, and I'm familiar with the area very well, South Avenue Q. You know, the turnaround there isn't great, other than you get to the next lot up, turn left, and then go around Barrowcroft Office Park. I mean, that's my, that's my first thought. Tell me if I'm, if that's what you're thinking.
Yes, sir. That's, that's a valid concern. But, again, our target demographics is not domestic travelers, right? So, people are traveling through Lubbock, and so they will have a navigation system that will correctly route them into the property. And to address some concerns about the traffic within the neighborhood, the reason the, there's only one entry and exit point on the Avenue Q Drive is because we want to prevent any traffic on the neighborhood side. So, there's no entry and exit, exit point, excuse me, on the neighborhood side, just for that specific reason. So, that when we were kind of finding that out, that was the concern that we took into account, communicating with the planning department as well.
Thank you for the explanation.
Thank you.
While we have Mr. Patel up, are there other questions for Mr. Patel? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, got a motion on the floor to approve on first reading, Item 9.9. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye. All those opposed, also say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion fails, seven to zero. All right, we'll move now to Item 9.10. It's on page 40. All right, we'll move now to item 910. It's on page 464. 910 and 911 are related. They both relate to cities' relationship with Atmos Energy. Before we get started on this, I'd like to ask our chief financial officer, Mr. Blue Kostlich, to share a brief overview. Blue?
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. Good evening. So tonight, you have two actions before you, both related to Atmos. The first is going to be the statement of intent to increase rates. This is based upon what's considered a rate case, what's commonly referred to as a rate case. Now, the reason we're in before the city council tonight is the city retains original jurisdiction over your natural gas rates within your jurisdictions, within the city of Lubbock. The Texas Utility Code requires the natural gas company to negotiate directly with the city council, with the city on these rates that they're going to charge customers within, within your jurisdiction. So that's why we're here tonight. The statement of intent or the rate case comes up a little bit less frequently. In between the statement of intent or the rate case, there's, there's about six years' worth of incremental or interim rate adjustments called GRIP filings. That's what you're most accustomed to. Those interim rate adjustments account for some investments that the company is putting into their system. In order to recoup those costs, they have to adjust their rates on an annual basis. So tonight is a little bit more in depth. Takes a little bit more to get to the actual statement of intent to the negotiated settlement, which is what we have before you tonight, the settlement agreement that we've come to with Atmos bringing to you for your approval. So Atmos is filing this to fulfill their duty under the Texas Utility Code. Some of the key elements to this agreement that we've come to is Atmos revenue increase based upon their expenses, based upon their maintenance and operations, their depreciation expenses, and some of their invested capital. Within our area, they're asking for about a 2.2, what we come to is a 2.28, just shy of $2.3 million increase in their revenues. Some of the key aspects of the agreement are listed for your review. They're really for more of us finance people who enjoy these numbers and capital structures and things like that. They're there for your entertainment if you would like to discuss those further. The rate impact, the rate class impact is on the right side of the screen for you. This is how Atmos is getting to that, to that revenue that they need in order to recover the expenses that they made, the investments that they've made into their system. What that really boils down to, just to make it simple and illustrative purposes, the current average bill on a residential being about $33.79 here in the city of Lubbock, the proposed statement of intent, the increase, would increase that to $35.88 per month. That's a $2.09 per month increase. So that's really what, what the statement of intent, this rate case boils down to for the residential customer. If we have any specific questions for Atmos, we do have the representation here from that company to answer any questions.
Okay, council, questions for Mr. Kostlich on item 910? Ms. Joy?
I assume that included in what they've spent includes what they're doing in replacing a lot of their infrastructure up and down Toledo Avenue and other parts of town.
Throughout, throughout the.
Okay, and so my question is, are those costs in this presentation that you have today, are they going to be coming at us later with more?
They will coming later, in a GRIP filing later. So they have those six GRIP filings in between where they can do interim rate adjustments. That's where that will come into effect. The ones that are happening today are after this.
But you're telling us, I guess this is an average customer's bill would increase by over $2 a month?
Yes.
On average?
On average, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Atkinson, did you have something you want to say?
Just if I might add a little to this, this rate case was originally filed last September. So council, that was when you first saw that, and you reject the rate case, and you put us in a position to negotiate. Lubbock is in a unique rate category. We're much smaller than what you see everywhere else. So it's Lubbock, Amarella, Channing, and Dalhard. It's a, it's kind of a card out from a prior world. All of us, as well as Atmos, immediately jumped in on that, began to negotiate, back and forth, back and forth. As you can see from Blue's first bullet point, we ended up at 55% of what they had originally asked for. Something that if I could just take a moment and offer some thanks to Atmos, and I know Phillip's back in the back there, we actually settled this in February for an April implementation. At that point, Atmos came to us, we were the ones under the clock. Atmos came to us and said, please, let's hold off. February, we all know what happened. It was a rough time, rough month. Some of what might happen from that is still not settled out. But they asked us to delay that, and as you can see from Blue's second point, they've delayed themselves, seeing the benefit of this negotiated settlement, for another two months, and we bring it to you for tonight. Counsel, should you approve this, the very next item? Also, I think you'll appreciate, and it has a little more positive effect on us. But with that, Blue or I, either one would take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Questions for Mr. Kostlich or Mr. Atkinson on item 910? Ms. Joy?
Mr. Atkinson, you mentioned that they had asked to hold off because of the winter storm. But I guess my question to you is, is there, has there been any information given to us because of those costs that they would, that Atmos would have incurred due to the winter storm?
We do not have anything other than what Atmos has released publicly. We know what the impact to them was corporation-wide, which is even much larger than Texas. They have not come back as to what those adjustments will be. Counsel and anybody that's listening, of course, that's a customer, that impact is going to be on the commodity charge or the fuel price. It won't be on the base rate, but we do know that, we do know that across the entirety of the Atmos system, that was extremely, extremely expensive to them, and at some point, that will have to come due.
Is any of that under consideration by the legislature as they're working through the bills that are supposed to improve the systems, both electric and gas?
I'm not aware that any of those bills that are under debate will address the fuel cost issue on the natural gas side.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Other comments or questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Kostlich. Counsel, I'll open the floor to a motion, begin consideration of 910. Thank you, Mr. Masagel. Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Is there further discussion on item 910? Okay, all those in favor of 910, please say aye. Those opposed, by the same sign. Motion carries seven to zero. All right, let's move to item 911. It's on page 496. And let's go to Mr. Kostlich again on this. Blue?
All right, thank you, Mayor. As Mr. Atkins has said, this is the good news side of the story. So the second is a notice of intent from Atmos to reduce rates. So based upon the 2017 Tax Act and Tax and Jobs Act, the corporate tax rate was dropped from 35% to 21%. So on Atmos's books, they carry deferred taxes that have a certain value. Based upon this reduction in the corporate tax rate, they had a reduction in those deferred taxes. So therefore, the IRS requires Atmos to amortize that out to the customers, that savings throughout their, their ratepayer base. So what that really boils down to is an overall rate reduction. And what Atmos has proposed is on the bottom left of your screen, the rate schedule and the monthly customer rate adjustment. So the net impact is what I'm showing on the right side of your screen, between what they just proposed in the statement of intent, the rate case. Now with the notice of intent to reduce rates, if you look at the lower right-hand that is highlighted in yellow, that residential customer that was $33.79 before on a monthly basis, due to the statement of intent, the rate case, increased to $35.88, that's your $2.09, now reduced by this EDIT filing of $1.88. So the net impact of the two together that go into effect together is an increase of 21 cents per month on a residential customer basis. That amortization for Atmos is over 60 months. So this, this rate reduction will be in for five years. With that, Mayor and Council, I'll take any questions.
Okay, council, anything, any questions for Mr. Kostlich on this one? Mr. Atkins, anything to add to that? Mr. Kostlich, Mr. Kostlich gives good news well, doesn't he? He does a good job with that.
I try too, sir.
Okay. Mr. Griffith, do you want to make a motion?
He's trying to end on a good note, Mayor.
Do what I can.
Move to approve.
A motion by Mr. Griffith, second by Ms. Patterson Harris, as our discussion on the motion to approve item 911. All right, all those in favor of the motion as it is on the floor, please say aye. Any opposed by that same sign? All right, that motion carries seven to zero. All right, I believe that takes care of our business this evening. Is that right, Ms. State Secretary?
That is correct.
You okay, Mr. Attorney? Okay, just a couple real quick reminder and a thank you reminder about tomorrow evening, 5:30 in these chambers, a town hall event for the proposed downtown civic park. With the meeting following that, there'll be a chance to look at some, look at the concepts and weigh in on those, and we would hope you will do that. A thank you also to our staff and other parts of city and our volunteers who helped with a very, I think, very well-done dedication to the new tornado memorial earlier today. It's been, it's been a really, really good day, and what a great way to celebrate the 100th birthday this evening of the Lubbock Police Department. So if there's no further business for the Lubbock City Council, it's a great day in Lubbock, Texas. It's 5:56, and we're adjourned. Lubbock, Texas, it's 5:56 and we're adjourned.